Jim Sottel.
Here.
Assistant Town Manager Ben Morse.
Here.
Attorney District Counsel.
Here.
Senator Fox.
Here.
Okay, next item on our agenda is public comment on consent agenda and non-agenda items. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on consent agenda or non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the April 2nd, 2013 minutes. Anyone have any comments?
I have a couple.
Okay.
Typos in one comment.
Commissioner McCool.
So on page one where it states there's since there isn't a permit for exceptions, so she hasn't said quite right, exceptions.
Okay.
So she may think that thing's just supposed to be she's.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a slight typo.
Correct.
And then there's another typo on page four at the bottom that it's important to have a code state, but I assume you need to have code state, or maybe it is to be have a code, maybe just something like that.
Okay.
Red, kind of weird. And I was curious if the minutes kind of indicated that Mr. Nelson stated that there was a request from a developer made very early in the meeting, but it was our understanding that we didn't really hear about that request until fairly late in the meeting. I haven't been able to review the tape, so I'm not sure if it was that early or not. But this sort of indicates that it happened right away, and then it was mentioned again later in the minutes, so I just wanted to verify that it was actually mentioned that early in the minutes. That's all.
Okay, anybody else have any comments?
I enjoyed reading them.
I had one on the first page, page one. The under where it says discussion recommendation to amend section, that first sentence says purposed. Which was that same one?
Yeah, give that word right.
Proposed, purpose.
Which is right below the paragraph where I said change it less.
Well, maybe there wasn't purpose behind the proposal.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of those corrections.
How? So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McCool, second by Commissioner Momart. All those in favor? Opposed?
Maybe she's abstaining. Are you abstaining?
Commissioner Eaton abstained. Commissioner Momart, you probably should abstain as well since you weren't here.
You're right. Absolutely. I got carried away, excuse me.
They were so good, you just couldn't resist. Okay.
Just felt like you were there after you read them.
I felt like I was going through the minutes. They were quite good.
Okay, next item on our agenda is number five, discussion recommendation of the second amendment for the Superior Urban Renewal Authority. Do you have a staff presentation?
Yep. Okay, so this evening, the Town Planning Commission is required to review and make recommendations regarding recommendations to the town board regarding this proposed second amendment to SURA, which it amends SURA by authorizing the implementation of the tax increment financing within the boundaries of the 2006 addition. So the reason you're being asked to do this is because it's state statute, and that the actual wording in the state statute is review. This section states that the planning commission, the plan must be submitted to the planning commission for review and recommendations as to the conformity with the general plan for the development of the municipality as a whole. We're referring to, this is our town plan, our municipality as a whole, the con plan. So what we did in the covers, we took you through the beginning. So SURA was set up in 1995 to facilitate the development primarily of the superior marketplace, serve the community, supplyed area, and now we have superior marketplace. 2006, SURA amendment was amended to add the property across the street, which we refer to as the Element Kek, Spicer, Uida, and Shuck properties, or Town Center. So those properties were added to the SURA plan. So tonight's amendment that we're asking you to review and make recommendations if you need to, to the town board. So the amendment permits SURA the phased implementation of property tax increment financing within the boundaries of 2006 addition, and that's property tax, and the implementation of sales tax increment financing, financing on a portion of the 2006 addition. What I'm referring to is the Spicer and Shuck properties is the sales tax in addition to the property tax for the overall property. These incremental tax revenues will be used to assist with public improvements in the plan area to alleviate existing conditions which impede the development. So what we're doing is we're funding, providing the opportunity to fund public improvements to improve the Town Center properties so that we can develop there. So, do you have questions? Sure.
And that's to include properties that hadn't, here before had been singled out, correct?
All the properties have been identified.
Okay.
So what we're doing now is kicking in the implementation portion of the sales property.
Okay.
Okay.
In the 2006 amendment, I found a sentence that said it's anticipated, or it is anticipated that a TIF will be implemented, and I'm just wanting to clarify that that's, that's what we're doing here tonight.
Exactly.
Okay. That's what I thought. It's page 27 of our packet. Those. See that? It was the first amendment, August 2006. It has anticipated their provision for the division of property tax revenues will be adopted sometime in the future. Okay. I have a few other questions, but anybody else have any questions?
I have a couple. I don't think they're all that related to decision, but a couple.
In the packet, it said, the town's presentation packet, it said alternatives considered, and I was wondering if you could go through those two a little bit more detail.
Sure. We've put them in because we want to make sure you know that we've looked at other options, but we're, keep in mind that we are recommending that you pass a resolution approving this amendment. So require the developers to finance the entire property independently. I'm not sure that that's possible, and if that, you know, we can require that and then see what, if anything happens across the street. The other one was the town purchases the land and assumes responsibility for development and related costs and improvements to develop it. Currently, I don't think the town can afford to do that, but we can start setting aside money to do that some long time in the future. And I think that's all I have on the list. So just to let you know that those are the other options that we would have.
Okay.
Alternative to doing TIF.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. On page 15 of our packet, in the Superior Urban Renewal Authority, county impact report, it references. Let's see, any residential development to be added as part of this project? Well, then it says less than 10% of the housing units are expected to be for rent. I'm just not sure where that came from. I'm wondering if that came from the PD or where exactly that came from.
I'm going to refer to Paul Mills on that one.
Paul Mills, town staff, that was, that comment Chair Folsom was in dialogue with the developer.
Okay.
So essentially, most of the units there are being proposed as for purchase.
Okay.
And the tendency for for purchase leads to essentially higher income thresholds of individuals requiring less from Boulder County for services rendered.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the questions I had. Anybody else have any questions? Okay.
Yeah, just a couple.
Okay, Commissioner McCool.
Sorry, trying to get to the right page here. So the written recommendation per se is the ordinance that we'll pass, is that when you state in that first page that that's, that we're required to submit a recommendation, that would be. I was trying to really determine exactly where the urban renewal area fell into place in original town, and I know it's not related to this, but since the urban renewal area is coming up again, I know from just past history, there were concerns about exactly which streets in original town were in the urban renewal area, and it would be nice if that could be clarified. Like even the street names in the graphics aren't labeled, like it's hard to see which is Fourth and Coal Creek and Williams.
So you want that as part of the recommendation?
If we could just clarify, yeah, in there that, just be a little more clear with the boundaries of the urban renewal area in the original town area. I think the rest is fairly easy and obvious, but if I remember correctly, there's only a couple of streets that are in the urban renewal area in original town. Mostly, some people have an opportunity to realize if their house is in the urban renewal area still.
That's fair. Okay.
I would just say it's on the graphic, it's a little misnomered because of the town plat. The old town plat is super in here, and it goes north of Maple Street. If you ever look at it, it's got little blocks north of Maple Street, and then it goes across the street over there where Superior Plaza is. So it gives you the impression that, you know, there are streets in original Superior that are in it, but really.
I think it's only.
They're really corporate.
Well, I understood.
There's Park Coal Creek Drive, that's where the park is.
Yeah.
That was in, correct. You're right about that.
Yeah.
Came down the Coal Creek Drive, and then it jumped up on Fourth Avenue to Maple, and then everything north of Maple over to Castle.
Okay, yeah, so we could just clarify that. It's easy to see, that would be.
Okay.
That was my only comment. I think that's all for now. Okay. So if that's all the discussion, or if that's all the questions, should we have discussion on the board to see how everybody's feeling about this? Go from there. Play it forward. Who wants to jump in first?
Good with everything.
Okay. Good. Good on that end?
Yes.
Okay. It all makes sense to me, too, so I think we're good.
Good.
So you'd like us to, somebody make a motion for the resolution? Is that the correct procedure? Okay.
I'm looking at the second amendment to the urban renewal plan as set forth in the packet, and I've represented my best.
Okay.
I'll second.
Have a.
That would be resolution.
I'm sorry.
Number one.
Okay, we have a.
Resolution number one.
Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution one by Commissioner Momart, and second by Commissioner Eaton. All those in favor? All passes unanimous. Okay, next item.
Anyone comment?
I do have an A and B, so we're not making any recommendations in that, so I will take
the A and B out.
Okay.
When we do the original for signature.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, makes sense. Next item on the agenda is the review and comment on the Superior Town Center Metropolitan District service plans. Staff presentation.
I'll get started, and then we'll introduce our guests. So Ranch Capital, operating as RC Superior LLC, are the prospective developers for the Town Center project, and they're requesting to form three metropolitan districts to assist in financing the construction and operation and maintenance that's needed for the infrastructure, things like utilities, roads, parking. The districts would also be used to finance the construction of enhanced improvements such as multipurpose playing fields, recreation and community center, parks, trails, an amphitheater within the proposed development. Ranch Capital is proposing to construct the development in several phases, and I think that's why we've got three metropolitan districts proposed. As each construction phase is completed, the development phase will be included in a district. The reason this is before you tonight is that it is a requirement in the Superior Municipal Code, Section 3160, that states the planning commission and board of trustees shall review the submittal for compliance with this article and other applicable law. And with that, I'll introduce Randy Goodson, who represents Ranch Capital or RC Superior.
Good evening. My name is Randy Goodson. Thank you very much for taking the time to hear our request. As staff mentioned, we are moving forward with plans to propose an amendment to the PD that the town approved back in November to reflect our approach to how we think the Superior Town Center can develop based upon the market constraints and the market opportunities as we see them. And in addition, the PD that was approved was focusing just on the Menkeck, Yella, and Town properties, but simultaneously, the design guidelines were approved over the entire property, including the Spicer and the Shuck properties. And if you look in the design guidelines, the design guidelines refer to them as phase one and phase two of Superior Town Center. And so what we're working on is working on phase one and phase two of Superior Town Center. It comprises approximately 170 acres, and the design guidelines were approved for 2,300 homes and 900,000 square feet of retail and office, plus 150,000 square feet for the recreation facility known as Boulder Valley Ice. And we are, so we're putting together a proposal that will come back before you in the future. One thing that we know for certain is it's going to be a large project that with a lot of infrastructure, we have, we have public infrastructure in three, we look at it as having three major phases. One phase is north of Rock Creek, pardon me, Coal Creek, and then the other phase is the, it's the remainder of what's identified as phase one. Your phase one is the, on both sides of the Main Street, and then we have, there's great names. In the PD, there's Main Street, and then north of that is North Street, and then south of that is South Street. So the second phase, or the second half of phase one, is between South Street and North Street. And then the, and then phase two is what's our planning area three. Phase two is the Spicer and Shuck property. And each one of those phases will have recreation components as far as fields. If our, you know, plan that we're conceptualizing now is approved, it would have fields in the north and fields in the south and civic space in the middle, as well as potentially, we've identified a place for a civic facility in the north to be near the fields, and a recreation facility to be south, and not just near the fields, but more proximate to Rock Creek Ranch and the trails that come out of Rock Creek Ranch. So that's something we'll be bringing forward. Early on, we know that it's, it will have to be built in phases, and as a result, we're proposing three different metropolitan districts, and each metropolitan district, it's just the way the ordinance is, we have to form those districts now, and they're tiny little spots, and then those spots will be relocated once the town approves a, the plan, development plan, and to correspond with three main planning areas of the project. So with that, we have a PowerPoint. Our advisors in this regard are McGee, Cisneros, Mary Jo, Jordan on the left here, and Kathy Furman on the right, and they have formed dozens and dozens of metropolitan districts. And so I'm going to introduce, who would like to walk through, Mary Jo?
Sir, I know.
I mean, just Mary Jo to walk through the presentation, and I'll be available for questions. Thank you.
It's Randy. Do I just push the mouse to switch the?
You should mouse. Oh, on the keyboard, the arrows here.
Oh, okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, perfect, great, thanks. Hi, my name is Mary Jo Doherty with a law firm of McGee, Cisneros, and our firm represents, we were actually counting them up today, over 250 special districts throughout the state of Colorado. And I kind of just did a, we kind of did an overview, powers and governance of special districts, and this is kind of a, kind of just an overview of special districts, and I'll add an information that pertains to the particular districts that we would like to form in the town of Superior, but this is kind of just a general information overview since it's, I think it's been a long time since Superior has actually formed metropolitan What is a metropolitan district? Basically, it's a quasi municipal corporation, a political subdivision of the state of Colorado, and it's a government just like a city, a town, or a county. That kind of, the primary difference between a special district and the town of Superior would be, special district doesn't really have the police power. You know, we don't have the power to have a police force and enforce those types of infractions or, you know, govern those types of things. Within the special district, we do have the power to impose property taxes or the power of condemnation. And in order to be a government, you need to actually have two of those three powers. Otherwise, you're probably not considered to be a government under state and federal And special districts are organized pursuant to Section 321101 of Colorado's revised statutes. So our, the district's powers are kind of, are kind of limited and authorized by these statutes, and then in addition, the town has adopted a municipal code which has additional requirements that the district needs to comply with. What are the reasons for using a metropolitan district? Ever since the Tabor Amendment passed in 1992, placed a lot of restrictions on the ability of cities, towns, local governments to actually finance types, infrastructure that's needed for new development within communities. So special districts have become a more popular financing mechanism because you can finance improvements within a finite area that are paid for by the residents and taxpayers of that particular area. I won't go through all the reasons, but if you have any questions about those, we can talk about them. Metropolitan districts need to have the power to provide at least two of the following type of improvements. So basically, we can, the district can provide all the kind of basic improvements that a municipality can provide. There are certain things that, you know, a district can't do, like affordable housing and those types of programs. So we can do streets and drainage, safety protection, water, sanitary sewer, parks and recreation, transportation, mosquito control, television reading and translation, and fire protection. And a lot of times, those powers are limited because as, within the town of Superior, you have your own water and sanitation district that actually provides those services, that basically the Town Center metropolitan districts would be able to build the water and sewer lines necessary to serve the development, and then if there were any extraordinary needs that you needed for the water and sewer system, you know, I don't think you'd do like a new sewer or water treatment plant, that would be something that the district could help finance, too. The procedure for organization, and one of the reasons we're starting so early in this process, is that we have to have an election in November within, within the electors of the district to actually vote for the organization of the district and the election questions. But before we can do that, we have to have the town's approval of the service plan, and then there's various statutory requirements we need to meet in order to get to the election process. So basically, we've submitted the service plan to the governing jurisdiction, and right now, we're going through the review process with the town, with the planning commission, and then on May 13th with the town board. Then if, after the, if the service plan's approved at that public hearing, then we actually go to the district court in Boulder County, and they actually will order the election. And then we'll have the election in November, and if the election passes, then we'll, there'll be an order that's recorded against the property organizing the districts. And I know one of the questions that we had at the initial meeting at the town board was, why do you need to form more than one district? And I think some of the things that Randy already mentioned as far as phasing of the development, also different types of development. Commercial development, typically, you would want to have a separate district for commercial development and residential development. So we're primarily planning and probably organizing the districts by those two types of development, so depending on when that development happens, we'll include them in one of the districts. In this particular project, right now, at this point in time, we have a single developer, but probably as the projects develop, there'll be other home builders that come in to build some of the residential development, and they may want to participate in, you know, in the residential district. If you have a, although we have a small piece of property here, we do have different types of development, as I suggested. There could be an extended build-out period, so it may take a while for the project to build out, so you may, you'll need more than one district for that purpose. And we have multiple and probably complex financings, since we'll be working with Urban Renewal Authority to issue debt. I think I kind of already went through this. Some of the projects that we've worked on that are kind of smaller developments, but that have more, multiple districts, are a couple of projects in Fitzsimmons and Aurora. There's a project called Fitzsimmons Village, which has, that district probably comprises, I think, about 40 acres, but we have three districts there to serve that development. And then there's the Colorado Science and Technology Park, where there are three districts to serve that development. And I don't know if you've heard of the, you've probably heard of the Denver Union Station project where they're redoing the whole, you know, RTD and rebuilding the trains and all that downtown. We have, actually have five districts that we're working on there. So we have a couple of residential districts and a couple of commercial districts, and that is another kind of small concentrated area of property where a number of districts will probably be utilized. And then the other thing I think that the council is also concerned about is kind of what Randy talked about, that our, we're starting out with very small pieces of property in each district, or what, kind of what we call pod districts, and then as we know whether the property is going to either be commercial or residential in nature, then we'll go ahead and include that property into a district. And then to kind of keep the financing coordinated, we'll have kind of one district that serves as the overall financing district, and that district will work with the Urban Renewal Authority, and actually, the revenue will flow to that district from the Urban Renewal Authority to pay the bonds issued by the district, along with the other property tax revenues of district number two and district number three. And then the special district is governed by a board of directors. The statutes allow for either five or seven member boards. They're elected by a majority of the registered electors, and then the board of directors serve staggered four-year terms of office. And to the extent there's any vacancies in between elections, those people, additional people can be appointed to the board by the existing board of directors, and those persons serve until the next election, when they have to be reelected. District authority to issue debt. There's several different types of bonds that districts can issue. General obligation bonds that are served, secured by an unlimited mill levy. Typically, when a district is organized, they're not allowed to issue unlimited mill levy debt. I don't know if you've heard about, there were some districts back in the eighties that have issued, back in the eighties, that's all the kind, only kind of debt we had was this unlimited mill levy debt. And districts got into trouble because they issued this unlimited mill levy debt, then they had to raise their mill levy to 1,000 mils to pay their bonds because there wasn't sufficient development. It basically caused all development to shut down. So kind of what happened is, in the early nineties, the state adopted some new statutes which all districts have to comply with. Basically, limits the, your general obligation bonds are subject to a limited tax until they get 50% debt to assessed. So that's the kind of bonds that this district will be issuing to start out with. Then there's going to be revenue bonds that are paid for with fee revenue, and then special revenue bonds, which actually will probably have a combination of the tax bonds and the special revenue obligations, because we'll have revenue pledged from the Urban Renewal Authority to help pay these bonds. And then the last category is kind of a new category that's, their special assessment bonds have been allowed to be issued by special improvement districts within towns and cities for many years, but just in the last. and cities for many years, but just in the last couple of years, they've actually allowed districts to issue special assessment bonds. And those are paid for with assessments that are imposed against specially, property that's specially benefited. So for example, if you're putting in streets and water lines, the property that's benefited by those streets and water lines would have an assessment imposed on it, kind of based on a per-square footage or linear, linear footage basis, to pay their fair share of those bonds. Sources of revenue. District property taxes, and there's generally an operating component to pay for operation and maintenance, administrative, statutory compliance, those types of things, and then a debt service component, which is used to pay the debt on the district's obligations. District fees, those can be in the form of development fees, which are kind of upfront fees that are imposed to pay for capital improvements, and then there can be operating fees and charges, and then special assessments, which I kind of already described. And then, once a district's organized, they also get a share of the specific ownership taxes that are collected by the state on motorized vehicles, and that's then distributed based on the assessed valuation of each entity within the particular county. In this instance, we're anticipating that there will be shared revenues from property tax and the sales tax increment. There may be a public improvement fee that's imposed, which is actually a private fee that's imposed by the developer via covenant on the property, and then that fee is also used to pay for public improvements. Use tax, I don't think that's anticipated for this transaction, but it is another type of, the district can't impose it, but a town or a city could elect to pay the district a portion of the use tax. Some of the legislative and statutory limitations that are placed on special districts, we have the constitutional debt restrictions from Tabor. There's mill levy limitations, as I discussed, the 50-mill levy cap unless you meet certain debt-to-assessed ratio calculations. There's investor limitations, and those kindly come up when you go out in the marketplace to market your bonds, and as you're marketing them, the investor will want to have certain security for the bonds. If they don't feel like you're going to have sufficient growth for your 50 mil, from your 50-mill levy cap or your property tax increment, they may require, you know, the developer, we may have to ask the developer to put up a guarantee in that, you know, in that instance, so the investor feels comfortable that the bonds are going to be paid. And then there's registration requirements. Any bond that's issued in Colorado needs to either have a securities exemption, or they need to be registered with the State Securities Commission. Then there's other non-statutory protections that I mentioned, such as the service plan protections, which we have in the service plan that we've drafted for the town of Superior. One is the debt service mill levy cap of 50 mils, which is higher than the model code of 25 mils. But 50 mils is kind of the standard in the state of Colorado for marketing of bonds in Colorado, and it's one of the requirements that we asked the town council to approve as part of the public financing agreement that was approved back in March. And so they basically agreed to deviate from the code from 25 to 50 mils. Then there's that operation and maintenance mill levy cap, which we would have agreed would be 10 mils for this district, provided that the town has also agreed to operate and maintain all the public improvements that are going to be constructed by the district. Then consent of the town is also required if we determine to form a special improvement district within the district, and that would be a district that would be authorized to issue those special assessment bonds. So before the district could do something like that, we would also need to get, come back and get the town's consent. Then we have a maximum debt issuance authorization of $145 million. And then there's also annual reporting requirements that the district needs to comply with. That's it, I guess so. And I don't know if you've had a chance, I'm hoping you had a chance to review the service plan, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about it.
Questions? Got one in the...
Can I, let me just, can I add one thing before your questions? What we're providing is a lot of flexibility in our service plan, because we have to go sell bonds to a public market, and this public market's very mercurial. We have to rely on investors, the investors, they vary, maybe they're insurance companies or private investors, you know, all different kinds of investors that might want to look at bonds. And because the interest rate environment and the environment for bonds and competitive investments is just fluctuating constantly, what Mary Jo has just described is really a menu of different ways that we can, we can meet the demands of the investment community when we go forward. And so we're not going to do everything that she's identified, but this, this is a menu that complies with state law, and, and we're just going to maximize the probability that we'll be able to issue bonds so that we can build the project faster and move forward.
Commissioner McCollum? So you just mentioned on page two of our, of item number six, page 58 of the, of the packet, that the maximum debt service mill levy, which you mentioned would be 50 mils, however, the maximum mill levy to support any debt issued will plan to be no more than 40 mils. Why do we mention that, or what?
Well, the idea is when you go out into the marketplace, you don't want to go out to the marketplace and say, we're imposing 50 mils for debt, and then you have to, let me see if I can explain this better. You kind of want to have a target mill levy when you go out into the market, because you have a bondholder, they don't want to be relying on you having to impose 50 mils to pay your debt. They want you to have a little bit of a cushion there.
A reserve.
A reserve, so hopefully you can pay, we plan on paying our debt with 40 mils, but to the extent, you know, the development didn't happen as quickly as we thought it would, then we could go up to 50 mils to actually pay the debt, but it's not something we want to plan on doing. And the bond buyer doesn't, the person that's buying the bonds, entity that's buying the bonds doesn't want you to act, you know, they want to be able to see that there's a cushion there. It's like when you have a mortgage, you don't put all of your income into paying your house payment, and that's the same way with the district.
Yeah, another way of thinking of it is, we can never exceed the 50-mil cap. So what Mary Jo just described is our intention, but it's also what we need to do to meet the bond buyer's expectations, that there's, there's a number of different reserves built in there.
Okay, and I think I understand that, I'm just, was curious why it's communicated this way. Will that be mentioned in other, in other ways, so that investors will see that? I mean, how, how do you communicate?
When you, yeah, it'll be, when you market the bonds, it'll be in the bond documents, and there'll probably be a financing plan that shows.
That shows the intent would be to stay at 40 mils, okay, all right, cool.
I had a question about the capital plan that was included with the three districts, draft districts. In there, it mentioned a 130-room hotel and some different, some sizes for office and commercial that was significantly different than the Boulder County Impact Plan. And I think the answer to that is, one was the PD and one is your, your proposal for the property, and I'm just wanting to understand those different numbers.
Yeah, so the different numbers, great question, the different numbers are, they reflect early, early thinking and an early evaluation of what the town had approved. We first started, we were attracted by the work that the town did to revise its vision and to identify the flexibility and the opportunity that is the Superior Town Center. And the, there were different numbers in the, the plan, development plan that was approved than there were in the design guidelines, because as I mentioned, the plan, development plan was phase one, and the design guidelines covered phase one and two, which was twice as much land. Each phase is roughly the same size. And in the design guidelines, the 130-room hotel, for example, was identified, the 2,300 maximum housing units and roughly 900,000 feet of office and retail, et cetera. When we, in our early evolution of evaluating the market in the Superior Town Center, we reduced those numbers, but we didn't increase, for example, hotel rooms, we didn't increase. What we're looking at now, for example, what we're planning to propose, is a 300-room hotel. We've dedicated more land to hotel, we've worked with hotel consultants who are working with different hotel companies, and we think there's a demand for 250 to 300-room hotels. So those numbers will change. But that was based on just looking at the design guidelines, and I said, okay, we're not going to do 900,000 feet of office and retail, or maybe they identified, I think it was 400,000 feet of retail, somewhere in that range, and there's just not that demand for that much retail. So we reduced it based upon what was clear at the time to, so when I talked to the board, I wanted to say, we're not going to be able to achieve the intensity that was in the design guidelines, and if that's going to be a problem, we want it now. And, and so that had to correlate with the discussion with the town board.
Okay. And the thinking is to make more of that space residential, as opposed to commercial retail?
The thinking is to, is to, one, just reduce the overall intensity and provide for an option to increase the intensity as the market evolves, and not wait for the market and have the land just sit there and not move forward, because we need a really high value, we need a high price, we need a super vibrant market to justify a project like this with the intensity that was in the design guidelines, design guidelines in the PD, which had, for example, a lot of structured parking, a lot of three, four, some five-story buildings, and as you go up in height, you go up in cost, your fire code compliance goes up significantly. And what happens with a lot of projects that have these really high fixed costs, if they're not designed in a flexible way, is they sit there and they wait till the market's really, really super vibrant, and then they try to get off the ground, and if the market, you know, drops off, you know, they're stuck. And you see, you know, decade after decade, you know, land sitting in places that is just waiting for that, that peak valuation. And, and so our approach is to come in with a flexible plan, where we can design, for example, 1,350 to 1,400 homes, not 2,300, which by the way, is half of Rock Creek Ranch, but with homes between 1,000 and 2,500 square feet in various higher-density formats, and in retail space, quite a bit less retail space, 250,000 feet or less. And same thing, the office space would be somewhere around 200,000 feet of office, and provide flexibility. So if, block by block, if we're able to find a great office user that we want to bring into the project that will, that will fit within the plan and that would augment the plan, then we can dedicate a block to that office user when they show up. But if, as we're building out, if we, if we have to build, you know, our town homes or row homes, like you might see in, in Riverfront, or places in Cherry Creek, Blendale, or Boulder, or actually some, actually somewhat right over in Lewisville also, you know, there are various places sprinkled around, but that's a product that's here and now, because it doesn't have structured parking, it's three stories, the cost to construct is a lot lower, and consumers are familiar with that product in this corridor. That's something here and now that we can build. And so we're, we want to build the project out in phases, and we don't want to be stuck waiting and just hoping that someday the prices will justify building out a certain block. So we're willing to move forward with somewhere in the range of 1,300 to maybe, you know, 1,700 homes or maybe 1,800, we're still working on, with our architects on, on the phasing. And so that's really just building in the flexibility, so we can start our plans to be under construction in January. And that's again why we're here now, because we need to hold the election this November, so we can be set up to issue bonds, and the earliest we can issue bonds probably is, you know, late December, which is a lot going on, late December, market's better in early January. Boulder Valley Ice, that facility, they want to start construction in January and have their building open in October. We want them to, to be in the plan, so we're focusing on just what's tangible, how we can build the project out now, and not focusing on, on, you know, the, the, having to achieve or requiring, being required to achieve the intensity that's in the design guidelines, but still providing the town, the community, and our residents with this mixed-use, walkable environment, with a, with central gathering places, a lot, we're restaurant-focused, as a, when you have more of a residential community, the residents are there at night, and so more of lunch and dinner places, and then breakfast, lunch and dinner for the weekends, like you might find in Lewisville, or Pearl Street's a little bit different, because there's a lot of office space, and it's, it's become a destination over time.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? I have one, two more. Okay. So in the capital improvement plan, it's 10 million dollars for a town hall, but in another partial document, it talks about that amount of money for civic use and possibly rec center, town hall. What, what are we thinking there? And is it truly 10 million for a town hall, or is it 10 million for, I don't know, for civic use items?
That's something candidly that we're still working on with the town staff. Early on, we, all we had to go on was the 2007 survey of, of civic and rec space, and, and then we know we want to move a town hall over there, and I guess the best way of putting it is that was the, you know, the demand of, of the town, when we were negotiating the development agreement, was that in addition to our, the streets and the parks, that we provide $10 million to construct those civic facilities that will be available for all residents of the town, that'll be truly public. So that, but it didn't correlate to the cost of building facilities, and we don't know exactly what those facilities are. We're required to dedicate a certain amount of acreage to civic facilities and a certain dollar.
My point is more, you're going to get a lot of comments on 10 million dollars for a town hall, and that's how it's labeled in the spreadsheets. So I would encourage you, if that's, in, in the discussion portions of the document, there is talk of other uses of that 10 million dollars. But people are going to hone in on a spreadsheet line item for 10 million dollars for the town hall, and if that's not exactly correct, and it's truly for civic use purposes, I would...
You mean change the...
I would encourage us to correct the language, so that, or else you're just going to get a lot of flack on building a 10-million-dollar town hall, which I don't think is our intent.
Yeah, it's really, it's really our development subsidy of these city, town-wide civic facilities.
And that's what I understood after reading through it all, but people look at spreadsheets, they don't necessarily read the details. And I guess if the, well, two questions on the election, or the ballot in December. If, for whatever reason, that doesn't pass, I mean, that pretty much stops the project, right? Is that fairly accurate?
The only voters are the owners of the property.
Oh, okay, so this isn't a town-wide vote for, okay, that's only the, okay. And then what about for the Board of Directors, is that also just the owners of the property that vote for the Board of Directors?
Yes, and of course, that will evolve, that evolves over time.
Okay, and that has often been our town board in special district cases, is that?
Initially, it's, it's the developer, I think, I believe, Fred, help me with this, with Rock Creek as an example?
Yeah, Rock Creek, we had three districts, and they all had separate boards.
Okay, did they get combined into...
No, they got combined.
Into a single board, which our town board...
Into a single board, and then it was taken over by the town, which was ultimately a good thing, I mean, I think that's a good evolution.
And we plan for the same.
Okay, okay. Okay, anybody else have questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion? Anybody, discussion? Thought we were going to have a bunch of discussion, it wouldn't have happened.
We were prepared, or tried to be.
It was very prepared, and I...
don't feel overwhelmed by all the new things that we're dealing with tonight. So thanks for getting that so well-prepared for us and having a good presentation for us here tonight. So thank you. So with that, if we have no discussion, do we hear, anyone have a same thing as...
The recommended action that we have in the, in the staff memorandum is just provide any comments on the service plans to the town board. So if you have any comment, for example, taking town hall and making, and using that terminology more as civic uses instead, if you want to push that forward to the town board, we could certainly do that. Or any other comments you may have.
Yes, I think that'd be a good comment to pass forward.
And do we need to do that formally, or?
I...
I think I had to make a list, and then we can...
Yeah, we just started a list, so.
You don't need to do a resolution.
I don't need to do a resolution.
I can just make sure that...
Okay.
What's that?
We can fix that tomorrow.
I don't really have any. Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't have a lot of answers. Okay. Okay, good job. I think that's, I think that's it. Next on the agenda, staff.
One item on the list.
Okay, staff announcements, Miss Lays?
We really don't have any, other than we expect to see an application from the town center applicant with respect to land use, a proposed change to the planned development amendment, which he alluded to tonight. We hope to see that application be submitted to us next week. Staff will review it, give them comments, send it out for referrals, and we'll try and have as much as we possibly can back to present to you at our May 21st regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting. That'll be a public, public hearing. And we're asking you to reserve May 23rd in case a second meeting is needed, because we'd like to take this to town board on Tuesday, May 28th. And the reason it's May 28th is a Tuesday, is because the 27th is Memorial Day. And that's really all I have for you.
So I think scheduling, the schedule you guys are pretty much holding up?
Yes, so far. We'll see.
Glad to do.
Yes.
Okay. Well, exciting times here on the Planning Commission and in town in general, so thank you very much, and we're adjourned.